Well, welcome everybody to the Program Working Committee meeting of March 28, 2024. We are having this meeting televised this evening because of the interest in the topics that we're discussing. So it's a little bit different tonight, so if you are speaking, I'd ask that you speak into the microphone so that it is recorded and people can hear you and that the audience can hear as well.
This is recorded, not live, just so you know, so it'll be replayed.
Right, thank you, yes, recorded, not live. Let's start with a quick attendance, is that all right? Is Jillian here? Jillian is here, nice. Mr. Kroto?
Yes.
Mr. Lincolnbicker?
You got it, I'm here.
Mr. Fabrizio?
Here.
Mrs. Holdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sackman?
Ms. Sack?
Here.
Ms. Jarlat?
Here.
Fisto is not yet, yes. Fisto is not here yet. Mr. Rashard is here.
Yep.
Ms. Wolf is here. Ms. Murphy is here. Ms. Miller is here. And Ms. Stan, how do you say your last name?
Me, Stanisowski.
Stanisowski, thank you, is here. And in addition, we have some extra board members here tonight that were in the area and very kindly are sitting in with us, and I appreciate that. That's President Pam Walsh. And Board Member Jessica Campell is also here tonight. Did I miss anyone? No, great, well, thank you. So we're just going to go over a quick overview of what we're working on and what our purpose is for everyone that might be listening later on. The purpose of our working group is to get your feedback on specific areas that impact the cost of the new middle school project. Over the years, there have been various visioning sessions with staff, students, and community members for this entire project. And there is a work group on sustainability, and there will be additional working groups in the future, including traffic and transportation. So we won't be addressing those particular issues. Our goal is to have the feedback on special education spaces, the auditorium, athletics, and physical education spaces to the building committee by April 18th, so that they can put everything together to bring to the full board by June. So for this evening, we're going to discuss and get your feedback on the projects that would include special education areas in the new middle school, an auditorium space, the athletic programs, and physical education. It's quite possible that we won't be able to cover all of these topics tonight and may have to put in an additional meeting, but those are our goals for tonight, they're pretty hefty. On April 18th, we're scheduled to be discussing the career pathways and outdoor learning spaces. So if we have to, we can push a few of tonight's forward to April 18th, but it would be great if we were able to make some discussions and thoughts, put some thoughts together on these times. If there's time allotted, and we have, we do have some audience members here tonight, we would, if you're in agreement, would allow public comment if we're able to get through things, okay? Is that, does everyone feel okay with that? Okay, great. So let me turn this over to our architects. While they're bringing that up, is, did everyone receive the update that I sent out?
On what?
On the last meeting. Okay, if you didn't for some reason receive that, please let me know, and I'll make sure I add you to the list. You didn't get, I sent you an update, we talked back and forth about that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that was the only one.
All right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't leave anyone out. Great.
Do you want to start with this one, or do you want to start with?
Maybe we just go back to the Part II really quickly, and we need to talk through the program.
Do.
Okay. So when we met two weeks ago, I think we walked through the program in some detail, and we also-
Could you talk into the mic?
Yeah, sorry. When we met two weeks ago, I think we walked-
Got to bring it closer to you.
Got to bring it closer.
Yeah, please, yeah.
All right, how's that?
That's better.
Okay, great. So when we met two weeks ago, I think we talked through the space summary and the graphic program in some detail. And we're just sort of bringing this up as a reminder to everybody, this is a kind of a graphic representation of the spaces that we currently were looking at in the building. Let's see, let's jump forward to the next. And just sort of as a reminder, this is sort of what we call a Part II diagram, this is sort of the big idea of the building. You know, we've been calling this scheme that was selected the Main Street Scheme. So we have this sort of main street that runs through the center of the building, that'll hopefully be a sort of a hub of the school, that'll really be kind of the heart and soul of the school. And the larger spaces, the exploratory spaces, are to the north. And then we have all of the core academic spaces kind of on the south side of the Main Street for kind of that ideal solar orientation. Our entrance is to the, from the east, and we have some administrative spaces that kind of flank the entry there, so sort of to supervise that sort of entrance. And now we'll walk you through kind of the updated floor plans in a little more detail, starting at the front door. So maybe we want to kind of zoom in to the, yeah, maybe we zoom in even a little bit more. So the entrance to the school is here from the east, we'll have sort of a large entry plaza where parents pick up and drop off, and school buses will both come together and meet. We have kind of a large cluster of administrative spaces to the north here, and you'll enter the school through a secure vestibule that will be sort of monitored by, monitored by that administrative block to the, to the north. To the south, we have some additional kind of administrative space. On the ground floor, it happens to be kind of the nurses' suite, and you'll see as we move up through the building, we have things like counseling that kind of stack above, so the entrance is really flanked by these administrative spaces that are distributed throughout the school. The school is organized around a team pod, so there are three team pods per grade, and then there are three, you know, grades in the school. And right now, the school could be organized either horizontally or vertically. That team pod is made up of three classrooms, three 900 square foot classrooms for math, science, and language arts. And then there's a larger classroom, which is a science classroom, oh, and social studies. And then there's a kind of a team project breakout area, a small group room, and then a flexible instruction room that are all part of that team pod. So the idea is kids will be spending most of their day sort of in this team pod area. And you can see there, there are three team pods on this floor. Zoom out a little. Yeah, maybe we zoom out a little bit. And, you know, we can go into these spaces in a little more detail, I'm just going to kind of give you a general overview. So then to the north of the, the Main Street, we have, right now, we have a 900-seat auditorium, and that's something that we can talk about in a little more detail tonight, we've got options for the auditorium. But the current plan is showing a 900-seat auditorium with a balcony. To the east of the auditorium, we have sort of the music department. Concord has a very robust music department, so we've got a band, chorus, orchestra room, and then a music theory, sort of general music education classroom space. Those are situated behind the stage, so all of that space can be used sort of as back of house during performances. Kind of moving to the west here, we've got the cafeteria is sort of out in this, this main, in this Main Street. So there are about 200 seats in that kind of central zone, and about another 100 seats kind of in a lower kind of nook that faces to the south. So the idea is really to give students options for where they want to eat and to provide different types of spaces and experiences. The kitchen servery opens off the Main Street there, to the, to the north of the cafeteria. And this, the Main Street is sort of lined with services that will support students, things like the tech office, we'll have a help desk that opens to the Main Street. We also have a space for a school store to the south side of the Main Street. And then there's sort of a large cluster of toilet rooms that will serve the auditorium and the gym above. To the, to the west, we have three kind of tech shop spaces, which are, these are the career pathway spaces, and this is something that the programming group will, they'll be tackling at the next meeting, so these are sort of placeholder spaces, we're not quite sure exactly what's going to happen in these spaces yet. And then in the middle there, we have some of the locker rooms and health classrooms that support the PE and health program.
Did you show us a, oh, I guess it's called a project room or a breakout room or something? I don't know what the words you used, but do you understand what I'm asking for?
Yeah, the project area, sort of this team area. We actually, if we go back a slide or two, I think we have a kind of a 3D view. Maybe it's forward, sorry, I don't remember the exact order. Yeah, here we go. So this isn't exactly what, this doesn't exactly represent the plan that we're showing you right now, but this is sort of the big idea of the project area, that it's a flexible space that can be used by that team, and, you know, lots of different activities could happen in that flexible project area. It could be used for sort of long-term projects that you want to set up and leave, it could be used for kind of small group presentations or small group collabora, collaboration. We typically put like a sink and kind of storage in that project area, so you have cleanup for sort of messy activities that you might not want to do in the classroom. And something that we had heard from the educators when we met with them is that they really wanted kind of sightlines to one another, they wanted to be able to sort of see their, see their peers, that's what the arrows are showing. Yeah, the arrows are showing that, that idea of, you know, some strategically placed kind of transparency that allows educators to see one another. Jay, did you want to?
I, you know, I was, thanks, I was going to just add, I mean, what you see right now, I've started to do some tours, and the benefit of like small project rooms where small groups of kids can kind of get together and collaborate, where the teachers can still have like, again, a sightline of, you know, what they're working on and what they're doing for supervision. But what you see, I see a lot of this in my daily, you know, walkthroughs, where my students currently are out in the hallways. Now, the challenge of that is, you know, the runlet mile and other things where kids are going to the bathroom, walking by, so it's, it's distracting to the kids who are working on projects, but what you, our kids are doing that stuff right now, but where they're doing it is in the hallways, so.
One thing that I didn't mention is the team pod also sort of has a small group room included in that team pod, so that's that room there. Go back to the plan. I think we can go right to the second floor, and talk about any other spaces down here.
So, so one of the concerns that I've heard, whoops, sorry, you for reminding me. One of the concerns I've heard relative to staircases, lots of stairs, and when we think about accommodations for all of our kids, what, what's the difference and what does that mean when you put ramps in? I mean, we've seen ramps in other schools, right, instead of staircases, you know, and so does, how does that play out in, in this? And we haven't really talked about, a lot about the ramp.
Typically, you see ramps where you have like a half-level change in floors. You know, it would, it would be a very, very long ramp if, we're thinking our first floor might be like 18 feet high because of some of the programs that we have on it, the music programs need some extra height, the tech shops need extra height, the auditorium, depending on how we design it, might need some. So, you know, that would be about a 180-foot-long ramp if you were going to negotiate floor to floor. So there is actually a school that we saw recently in Massachusetts, it's an elementary school, and it's a pre-K through 1, I think, so it's for the little kids. They actually did this, they put in a ramp from 1 to 2, and their, their school is two stories. And I think for them, it works pretty well. They, the little kids really like it, you know, it's hard for them to negotiate the steps, and so I think it works. It's something we could investigate here, but it will take up quite a bit of real estate. So we're happy to look at it for you. The other thing I would just mention, if you actually were, you know, in a wheelchair or on crutches or something, it would, it would take a lot of effort to get up that ramp to get to the second floor. Going in the elevator might be a better way to do that, now it's, you know, not following the same path as all the other students, so I understand, you know, full inclusion would be to keep them in the same path.
What size are those elevators? What size do you put in? I don't know, all I know is, you know, what you see in a hotel, that's not the same thing.
It's a good question, I don't know the exact cab size off the top of my head, but it fits a stretcher, yeah.
Does it fit a stretcher?
It fits a stretcher, it's quite large.
Is it code size of the elevator to make sure that, again, you can fit like for emergency personnel if, you know, someone has something and needs help? And, you know, one of the common things my students are asking already about the new project is, you know, "Mr. Rashard, how many elevators are we going to have in the building?" And if you look, would you mind pointing out the two elevators? Because I think we kind of started the conversation whereby code, we really only have, really would, maybe, again, these, this is my perspective, one elevator, but in the very preliminary conversations, we said, you know, we want to make sure we have two elevators to provide the best possible access for all our students to get to both sides of the building.
Yep, so these are the two, so you come in the main entrance, there'll be something directly adjacent to that, and then further down in the Main Street, may end up being a little further even than this, but we've got one located here right now.
Kind of centrally, and we always try to pair an elevator and a stair, so, you know, people are kind of entering the stair or the elevator at the same place and exiting at this, adjacent to one another. We do, we could-
Could I just ask, what happens in the event of an emergency if you can't use the elevators in that event, right?
Right.
So then what, if we had a three-story building, what would be the process?
Right, so in this case, we'll provide an area of refuge inside the stairs, and a student that couldn't use the stair could go into that, and it's completely fire-rated, and it's got an emergency call button, and the first responders know to come to that location and, you know, take people down that need assistance from that area.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to share that picture of the school?
A couple slides forward. Holly's telling me, we have a photo of that school in East End that I was talking about with the ramp.
Yeah. So here you can see, this is the ramp, and it kind of winds around this, this wall, right? So it's at the edge of the cafeteria, and it's kind of doubling back behind that wall that you see.
This is a rendering of it, but you see, you go up, then there's a landing, you go up, and then there's a landing, and it's kind of, it's kind of sneaking back and forth, I imagine it's kind of coming around too. So it'd be something that would wrap that whole Main Street space if it was installed.
Kind of, is it a lot more expensive to put a ramp in? Does it increase?
It takes up square footage, right? So it'll just, it'll make the building bigger, and that will add money to it. How much money, you know, we could, we could assess it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I think, yeah, this is good, okay. So on the second floor, we have the gymnasium and a large multipurpose PE room along with a fitness room. Right now, we're showing sort of a larger gym and a multipurpose room that's similar in size to the current multipurpose room. You can also see the, the balcony for the auditorium here. You know, the balcony allows us to have a slightly smaller footprint for the auditorium, but we can consider different types of auditoriums, and again, we have images for you to look at of that. And then over, over kind of the entry is the media center, which we think would be really nice as you approach the school, sort of above that administrative zone, you'll see the, the media center, which also has a maker space in it. Looking at the kind of core academic zone, you can see that green space on the right there. This is sort of a wellness suite, so this is sort of the counseling offices and their, their spaces, with a kind of a shared conference room for them to have kind of lunch bunches and small group meetings. That core zone has a bunch of different support spaces for, for the students, so in addition to things like teacher planning, there's a teacher planning room on each floor of the building, so teachers have access to that on every level. And then you can see there's kind of a reading specialist room in this kind of support zone, also things like a science prep space. The team pods are identical on every floor, so they have the same four classrooms plus a small group room and that flexible instruction space. The second floor and third floor has sort of world languages and the multiple-language learner classroom, so we have that sort of a, kind of a cluster here on two stories. So we have a little kind of language cluster.
And that space in the middle, these are, you know, walkways, and these are open to below where you see the axes, that means it's a two-story space and it's open.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and the third floor, again, the pods are identical to the first and second floor. We have some additional, additional world language classrooms to the west here, and, you know, some other support spaces kind of in the center, including a space for Title I, teacher planning, and some flexible spaces. And then we have the art classrooms sort of above, looking over the media center. And this is a preliminary view of the Main Street, so you're looking out to the woods to the west, and you can see sort of the big numbers on the wall, kind of indicating these are sort of where you enter those team pods.
Theater, gym.
And I think I didn't mention when we looked at the plans, but there are doors that separate that core academic space from the main space, those doors would be on hold opens and held open during the day, but they could be shut during an emergency or in the evenings if you want to use the building for other activities. So it's very easy to, to partition the school. Yep.
So did I miss a teacher lounge somewhere? Staff lounge?
Those, that's the teacher planning room, so that's the green space kind of in the middle, and typically they'll stack all the way up through the building. So we've got a teacher planning space on each floor, so that'll have a little, you know, kitchenette in it, you know, some, some chairs, you know, table, but we do have a good-sized teacher planning space on each floor of the building.
Are there any special other spaces that you have planned for our teachers that might be unique to the building?
Well, we do have, we have a lactation room on each floor.
Yeah, that's something I purposely, because that's something new, that's, you know, we have a lot, a lot of, you know, young mothers who have maternity leaves and things like that, so I, I'm not an expert in this, but that's something that I've learned over time, like my young, you know, my parents who come back and need a space, like literally right now, they're in like a room offset of the library with, it's a challenging space, we'll leave it at that, so that's something that we wanted to be thoughtful about for our staff. So that's something, I think, new, and I don't think we have any of those spaces in any of our other schools, but just trying to be thoughtful of staff needs, not just now, but in the future.
Can I just ask about the accessibility of the bathrooms to, the bathroom accessibility, the kind of bathrooms we're going to go into the building to, if you could just highlight that?
Let me zoom in on a pod. Yeah, sure. So we're currently showing all single-user toilet rooms throughout the building, and a percentage of those will be accessible. So right now, actually, we're showing them all as accessible, the size of each of those toilet rooms we're showing right now shows them all as accessible. They don't need to be accessible, all of them don't need to be accessible by code, but within any cluster, you will have an accessible, at least one accessible toilet room, possibly more, we haven't done our official plumbing counts yet, but.
So can I just follow up to that? So they're single, single-use?
Yeah.
So will they be able to be used by either male or female or whomever?
Correct.
Okay.
They're gender neutral.
Anybody.
Anybody.
Anybody who needs to use a bathroom, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but I would often joke with the kids, because kids would ask about it, said, "Hey, anybody who wants to use that bathroom can, you know, use that bathroom." And I do want to add, like, you know, one of the fun things, I've just again done a couple tours, it's fun to see the building in action, because, you know, my eighth graders, my student leaders upstairs on, on the second floor, what I see a lot of is those students coming down, and students, you know, some of my, some of my guys who you wouldn't maybe suspect, like, you know, come down, they want privacy in the bathroom, so they'll actually come down the stairway from the eighth grade area and go to the single-use bathrooms, and that's something I'm actually going to be looking at, you know, there are opportunities, we can add more of that throughout our current building, because kids want privacy when they go to the bathroom. So, and the type of styles of bathrooms I have right now, you know, I'll just use like the boys' bathroom, there's several urinals in there, but my guys, I get a kick out of this, but they like to go in there and fool around, and if you walk around me, I'll often say, "Guys, what are you doing in there?", and they'll quickly, you know, come out, but I, just part of growing up too, and I, and I mean that with good humor, but, you know, they like to congregate in there, particularly my male students, girls too, but that's going to make a big difference.
Something new, right?
Yeah, well, it's not new at all, but, you know, one of the things, it's really important when we think about-
Now it depends instead of their.
Yeah. This is something I think about a lot, and I talk to my students a lot, learning time, right? So if I see kids, when we have water filling stations and things like that, when I see a line of kids waiting to fill up their large 50-ounce cup, I look at it like they're losing learning time. Same thing with the bathrooms, right? They're going in there, pulling around, normal, normal adolescent behavior, right? But they're missing out on learning time, so, something I have a lot of conversations about with students.
And we will have bottle, bottle filling stations.
Could someone comment on flexible instruction unit and the small group instruction unit? Maybe the principal or somebody?
Yeah, so you want in like a team area like that, it's just flexible space, so if students are getting direct interventions, whether it's a Title I math tutor or a special educator, it gives you opportunity to meet the kids where they're at on team, so the kids have to travel less throughout the building. It's just a flexible space where anybody could use it, it could be a speech and language pathologist, it could be the principal wanting to stop in real quick and meet with the group of children who maybe made a poor choice at recess, so it's just like a flexible space that anybody can use at any time on that team, and really important, it's also like an instructional space where, you know, I-
I'd rather see that in connection with your special ed classes, where you have to have that.
Yeah, but there will be, that space will be used by-
If they can't take care of their classroom, and they have to have small group instruction or flexible instruction, you know, who's going to be supervising it, who's going to be in charge?
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't see that as a necessity.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, Betty, that's a really important space for our special education teachers to kind of meet the kids where they're at, right on team, and-
Well, that's where it should be.
Yeah, it is, well, that, that is.
So why is it there?
Yeah, because you want it as close to the kids you can possibly get, so with those 90 students on that team, the special education teacher could be right there to support those children right there on team, and it's, again, less travel time, less loss of learning time.
Are you talking about a classroom aide taking some kids aside to one of those areas?
Absolutely, so it could be a special ed teacher, a special education parent.
I just want to identify the use, you know, otherwise, it's going to be up for grab, and the first person and the strongest person who gets it claims the space, you know how that works at schools.
Yeah.
You know, don't, don't ever move out because somebody else is going to be in before you're halfway out the door.
Right, and I'll jump into that, can be, that's going to be scheduled, we're talking kids with, you know, our multi-legal learners, we're talking our special ed kids, we're talking our kids that need just direct reading instruction, we have students that need, you know, like Jay talked about, maybe one-on-one consultation with the teacher, it'll be scheduled, it's, it's the idea of that room is going to be scheduled throughout the day. So it's, it's got flexible groups, but schedule flexible groups. And there will be times it's not used that the team will take advantage of it, because they're doing a group project, and they're doing a small group project where they want to use that space.
But John, great point, you do need to schedule those spaces, so.
The teams will.
You didn't-
You didn't do the extra spaces on the first floor. We sort of looked at them and didn't get back to them, the other.
Yep, hang on, just let me zoom over here, over here.
Yeah.
Yep. So, we have, we have an OTPT, which will be used by all of the kids in the school. We have speech, life skills, and then two really large flexible instruction spaces. And I would turn it over to the district to talk about, you know, the different types of activities that might go on in some of these.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that, you know, again, those are flexible instruction spaces. Our special education programs, I mean, one of the things with special education programs, and John can help me with this, is, you know, situations change over time. Like you might have specific needs with a group of students for a few years and that changes over time. So, you always want to make sure your spaces are as flexible as possible just to meet the needs of all your children, you know, whatever that looks like. So, sometimes people like to put labels on certain rooms for certain types of kids. I'll just speak for myself, like, there was often like an ED, emotionally disturbed children. That's a special education label and very keenly, like, you know, I have a concern putting labels on rooms for our children because when you work with middle school, they'll often take some of these titles and use them inappropriately or to tease each other and things like that. So, we just want to be very thoughtful about how we use language, not only in our planning, but in our school community. So, it just, we want to be thoughtful about that.
I'm wondering, is there a reason that you've put the OTPT on the first floor rather than maybe the second floor where you're traveling down or you're one or you're traveling up one? It seems like we're, if we put it on the first floor, we're asking our mobility impaired maybe students to travel more. So, maybe it makes sense to do that, I'm just wondering what the thinking was with that.
Yeah, it's a good point. You know, we're happy to look at other locations for it. We did, we did talk to folks that are going to be, you know, in these classrooms and they do often use that space. So, we were thinking, you know, it's a nice situation to have them kind of next to each other. In other schools, we've also put the OTPT by the PE. And, you know, that's a great location for it as well. And that could be on the second floor next to the PE spaces. If that's something, you know, this group thought was a good idea.
Do you want me to jump in?
Yes, I'd love for you to.
And things like that, I was just waiting for my, I didn't know what my time was and I wanted to just.
Oh, yeah, you've got time.
So, I think that, you know, again, in this, I think I met with a great group of parents over the last couple of days. And I think that it really, that have really life experience with their children. And it was great to hear from them because what I heard a lot was, we want this building to be accessible all the time, everywhere, and we want a vision towards that. And I think, one of the things, I think Catherine brought it up, is the stairs walking in. I think we want to take a hard look at that because that says if I'm in a wheelchair and I walk in, the stairs are in front of me, uh-oh, what am I going to do here? And it's just the look and the concept mean a lot about your philosophy and where Jay's going to lead the building moving forward. And I think that's part of it. So, it's something to think about, then going forward. Also, those rooms, I think that, and I said this to a group we worked with, when we did this planning and I was part of like, you know, with the architects and stuff, and we had to do our first conceptual and get ready for our, get ready for our submission to the DOE and all those things, we looked at the number of spaces we need. And we kind of put them on a grid to say, do we have all the spaces we need? There's a lot of flexibility in this for where we can put some of these spaces. And I think that's important to say too, that that was kind of, we could have just put numbers on these and not put labels on them yet, and we could have done some moving. But it's where we are right now. So, I think that accessibility, I would love to see those rooms that we put kind of on that that left side of the wing move more towards the center of the building. And maybe versus two together, one on each floor, just to kind of give us the opportunity, as Jay said, as the populations change, some flexibility, move them closer to the elevator too, if we can, to do some of that. That would be, I think, one of the things that I would kind of, Brendan asked me what recommendations to have. That's a recommendation I would have by looking at this and talking to some people about if we cannot, again, conceptual is important. And I think that the conceptual about we're going down the left wing behind the other team to go to my specialized classroom has a connotation. Center of the room and I need that service or based on the continuum of service in the law, I need to go to that service, it's still, I'm included still within the core of the building and where things are accessible. So, it's kind of the first thought, I would think, when I, when I kind of look at this and talk to some people about that. I think that beyond that, it's kind of, we do, we have, we have a gamut of programs. And we've moved a lot, like Jay's team is doing some work with UDL right now, Universal Design, about their educational, their educational delivery of services. Training has to come first for our staff in doing that. And we've been doing a ton of it over the last couple of years. We have to continue that and get them ready to know, the concept of going into this is we are going to include kids. We are going to have them on team. We are going to make sure that we're meeting all the needs within the building and within the groups and that we don't want to create a space that says, it's kind of like if you build it, you will come. If I put a program over here and say that's for students with multiple disabilities, well, guess what, every kid with multiple disabilities, we're going to gear towards that room versus saying that we have flexible groups that if a child needs that continuum, we'll move them towards that continuum. But that's based on the parents and the team together making those decisions for the child, not just the building.
I just want to add something up that's really important about flexible spaces. And I think about this a lot, I share this with my staff when we have these conversations with the architects because I think about, we need to be forward-thinking and futuristic because think about like the changes just in education in general over the last, say, 30 or 35 years. We're going to have this building a long time. So, the more flexible spaces we can think about, I just, I don't know if anyone knows, I'm a former special education teacher, actually. And I just think how far we've actually come in terms of special education services and things for children over the last 30 to 35 years. And that was long ago, I'll just, that was back in 1995. I wasn't even, you know, so again, that's something I think about, about this space and just trying to have as many flexible spaces because when we have terminology like that, things change. You know, we weren't even talking about autism spectrum disorders maybe 30 years ago. You know, things that our children face right now. So, just something to be thoughtful about because that's how I look at this building and the responsibility that we have of not just getting it right for now and maybe the next 10 years, we got to be thoughtful about this building we're going to use for our children here in the Capitol for the next 50, 60, 70 years. So, that's why we want as much flexible space as possible.
Thanks.
I definitely wanted to just echo what you were saying and just, oh, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to echo what you were both saying and kind of just say, like, I know obviously with some things, like there's, maybe there's only one PT for the whole school or something, but anything that like, there's not just one, I feel like should be integrated in the more the team pod or at least like on their floor. I mean, obviously, you're not going to hire triple the people if you don't really need them. So, I get that some of the things need to be in a different spot. But I also loved that the multiple language learners area was with the world languages. I thought that was really great.
So, I just had two things that I kind of noticed along, so in the flexible instruction on that last one that you showed, it had the comm at the far end of it. Is that intended to be like a sensory-based room or what is the intention for that area?
Yes.
That's going to be a sensory-based?
That's what we want to do, we want to build in some sensory-based rooms too, again, that are flexible, that are flexible and throughout the room. We want spaces to be able to do that within that.
Yeah, and that's only in that level of the school?
We had, we have another one on one of the upper levels. So, we had at least two.
There's two.
And we may have, you know, maybe there's one on each floor. It's a pretty small space, but we had more than last.
Yes, okay. And the other piece was, I know that you had talked about the flexible instruction, like those group spaces in each of the pods being scheduled. Is the plan, I'm assuming, is going to be intentional for if a student is having a difficult time and needs to step out? That's not something, obviously, we know is going to be scheduled?
Yep.
So, that is, there's some flexibility in that sense to be able to use those small group rooms to kind of like take a minute and do like another more structured, quiet comm activity or whatever that coping mechanism is for that youth?
Absolutely. I mean, like when you see that small group and all the team areas have those and those are huge. I mean, that's a profound difference in terms of what we have right now. My office was a comm space this afternoon for a child. So, it's like, we try to kind of figure it out. And it'll be the same thing in the new school, it doesn't, we're going to use every square foot of that school to meet the needs of children, whatever that looks like.
And I completely agree with what, is it Jillian? What she had said about having those additional supports, like in each pod. So, you don't have a student that's in, you know, Pod A or whatever that's going to be labeled as, going to Pod B because they need that additional support. So, really having it still inclusive in their group of individuals who they're already assigned to.
So, I also did a little investigation of my own. I asked some teachers who worked at some of the other buildings that you designed, Abbott Downing and CMS, what they liked and didn't like. And the number one thing they said they didn't like is there wasn't enough special ed rooms. And they said they really, really struggle with using, I guess, spaces that really weren't supposed to be special ed, like the little, you know, sort of hallway closet-type rooms between the classes as special ed and just there's not enough rooms. So, I think especially as, I mean, I don't know how many, probably have numbers, how many kids are in special ed. It's just the more areas for these kids to have these breakout rooms, the better. And that was the number one comment I got from them. So, they do like the spaces, that's the only thing.
But to Jay's point, I think that kind of shows just how much it's changed, like even in that short amount of time, like 10 years, right? That wasn't part of our program at that point, you know, or maybe it was a very small space.
Right.
And so, I, you know, I think that this administration is really, you know, thinking of the future.
Right, and there may not, there's not a way really to know in like 30 years what it's going to be like. But at least if you go back and talk to some of the teachers who were in kindergarten, first grade at CMS and Abbott and Melbrook and see, you know, what, what would you want? Like what do you see, you know, coming through? So, I thought that would, so seeing those, like, there's two at least in each pod. So, I thought that was good. I mean, I'm not an educator, so I don't know if that's sufficient. But, you know, if you want, if you talk to, go back to those buildings and ask.
Sure, yeah, and we actually, we did do a post-occupancy with them and we did hear that same.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, we did hear that same thing about the, you know, the sped classes and not having enough space for them, so.
I just think language is important too. And I think that, you know, that's why our office is student services because I think it goes way beyond those students that are just identified as special ed. It's way beyond that. It's our students with 504s, it's our students that aren't identified with anything because they don't need a label that could help. And that's kind of the most important thing to keep that philosophy around in these, you know, I get cringy, I guess, is the word, when I hear the word, you know, special ed or sped sometimes. And I want to make sure we move beyond that to talk about student needs.
I apologize.
And that's where we want to go. Oh, don't apologize.
I'm trying to get on the right name train.
I, yeah, just off topic, but not really off topic, the cafeteria, can we go back to that? Is that open space where kids are walking past it?
Yes.
And has there been any conversations about how that would feel for maybe kids with anxiety or folks that would feel uncomfortable walking through large groups of people in social setting like that? Because I know for myself, like my heart's like racing, just if I had to walk through that in middle school, I would have a panic attack.
Yeah, that's a great comment. We haven't thought about exactly somebody walking through it. We've been thinking about it in terms of the students that are eating. And can we give them different zones and kind of areas that have a different kind of atmosphere so that they could feel comfortable?
Right.
But I think your point of even, you know, a student that has to walk through here to get to there.
Because I thought about the elevator, walking through OTPT, having to walk past all those kids, that's just.
It is.
Yeah, so that's, that's great. And we'll, we'll think about that in terms of ways we could maybe deal with that with like, you know, even a low wall.
Making it feel safe.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's a great point.
Well, I mean, I feel like having the elevator with, you know, the, I mean, PT, I would presume is for a lot of kids who might have mobility issues. So, it might make sense to have the elevator close. And then the elevator could kind of double as like a bypass for going through the cafeteria area for other kids who might not have mobility issues.
Exactly.
But even with this design, if you want to sit in the quiet area, you have to walk through every single table with your lunch, right? Yeah, now I'm flashing back to middle school.
But honestly, just no school wouldn't go to those class. I would skip class to avoid that. So, I'm just thinking of those kids.
Right.
I know, clearly I got over it, I don't shut up now. So, we're. This is great.
And also keep in mind, I mean, I hear that, that's actually, that's great insight. But, you know, the kids are going to be in there, the entire school, maybe an hour and a half a day. So, one of the cool things I like about this layout is that, you know, teachers and teams can also use this space possibly as like learning space during the academic day with these nice round tables. It's like perfect area for like group work and things like that. So, you know, kids could use that, that space we can use during the day, outside of lunch hours.
Yeah, we could imagine, like, you know, you could have a teaching wall right here, right? You could have technology and you could set up a class. And it doesn't necessarily even have to be this furniture, there's lots of great flexible furniture now too.
Is there any way to make a hallway around it?
Yeah, that's what I would have said.
Yeah, just like to down and around.
This way?
You don't have to walk right through. Because I do like how open it is, it's so nice. But yeah, I get your point about being anxious.
Sounds like there's a lot of little tweaks that could be made. It's not like a whole, it's not like a total change, but like, I was even like mirror, like things could be even more accessible.
And we're very early in the design, so every time you see this, it's going to look a little bit different. We have over a year to go. So, we welcome all your comments and we're happy to move stuff, tweak things, you know, we're all for it.
And, you know, we've started to put furniture in the plans and it's a little early. We don't usually talk about furniture so early. We really put in the furniture to kind of give you a better sense of the scale of the building and a sense of scale of the spaces. You know, it's a little easier to, you know, look at a room and understand what you might do in it if you can see the four tables and eight chairs, right? So, that's sort of our, our goal with the furniture right now.
So, so every youth that is getting lunch is coming across that main hallway to go sit somewhere? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Means you're mad a little bit here, not this much though. So, basically, like Holly said, the kids are in their pods for most of the day, right? So, but then if this, this pod was going to come out for lunch, they're walking this way to go in. They're probably walking like this, getting their food and then trickling down into here on the upper floor. Let me go up one because this one's more. So, if you're in this pod, you're coming across and going down the elevator, down the stairs or down an elevator to get to that area, which is here and under here.
So, I guess part of like the anxiety piece and just commotion, right? Is that when they're getting their lunches, they're then kind of crossing across like opposite traffic, right? So, if they're coming out of the lunch area going to find a table and there's some, you know, there's kids that are rushing to get to their class or they're running a little bit late past the bell, there's just that added commotion that I would think about.
Yeah, like if you even kind of could switch like the tech office, I know they're not exactly the same size, but with the like smaller cafeteria area, then maybe it could be like, you could just sneak through to the little cafeteria area, yeah, instead of.
Yeah, and that actually could be, this zone could be even more kind of cozy than, you know, this side here is still kind of out in the open, it's got windows, which is really nice to the outdoors. These are outdoor spaces. But I could imagine a smaller zone in here for kids that don't want to deal with any of this, just pick up their lunch and go in here. So, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
I'm envisioning this cafeteria to be open for all three floors, is that correct?
Yeah, it is open, let's see.
I'm trying to think of the noise that might come out of that.
So, these doors can close all the way across, like you can, you can leave them open or you can close them. So, that will buffer all of these folks from it. And we will provide really good acoustic material in that space, so you won't feel like it's, you know, deafening in there.
So, if I'm on the eighth, let's say eighth grade is the third floor, just saying that, and I'm in my, I'm in my. And I'm in my, oh, I'm in my pod though. I'm not walking the hallways.
Right, right. Exactly. Exactly. And the third floor is probably, Holly's going to say this, but the third floor is closed off.
Right. It's, there's, there'll be glass.
You wouldn't be able to yell down the third floor.
It's glass.
I'm thinking what I might have done though.
You know, we'll also be really looking closely at how much transparency, transparency we have, you know. You know, we can also put a film on the glass and, you know, we'll have, you know, sections of solid wall and sections of open. So, you know, we want to provide that sense of connection with your kind of the larger school, but we don't want it to be distracting. So, so we know that that's really a critical conversation that has to happen as the design develops. And just so, you know, we've already met with our acoustical engineer to start talking about this Main Street space. Because getting the acoustics right in there are really going to be very important.
Are the locker rooms below the gymnasium?
They are.
And does that create, it feels like it creates barriers to students that they will have to go upstairs or up elevators if they're changing in the locker rooms? And besides all of the trouble that sixth, seventh and eighth graders can get coming up and downstairs after being in locker rooms away from their teachers, it just feels like that, you know, now if you were a student who experiences a walking disability, you have to cross the hall, go up an elevator to go to the gym. I don't think that works.
That's a good point.
And again, anybody with body issues walking through in your gym, sure, go upstairs.
So our goal with this was to try to minimize the footprint of the building.
Yes.
So in a lot of schools, we've been putting kind of all the support stuff below the gym and then putting the gym on the upper floor. You know, the more you can minimize foundations, you know, exterior wall, it's all about the kind of cost cutting that we're going to have to go through at the end of schematic design. So that was our thinking. But you're, you're right. The path of travel for someone would definitely be different if you needed to go out to the elevator and come up. So we'll, we'll take a look at that. The PE offices are down here right now with the locker rooms. So we were imagining that the, the teachers were down there and then would come up with their students. Let me just see here. Yeah. So we'll take a look at that. Oftentimes we put in a number of unisex sort of changing rooms, toilet room, shower combinations along this edge of a gym so that, you know, officials can use them for games, but also students, you know, can use them for changing. And maybe the locker room design in the school isn't the right way to go. We, we are doing something different with the toilet rooms, right? Which is, I think, a great step in the right direction. Maybe we need to think about the locker room.
If you go back to the ground floor, we do have a kind of a series of kind of shower rooms in between the locker rooms currently.
These are, yeah, these are the ones that Holly was saying. So those, those could be a single user could come in. And, you know, also teachers might use them if they're biking to work in the morning. They could use these before school starts. So maybe we look at putting in more of those and less of this.
Brenda, I just wanted to ask, was there anything else around special ed before we move on to the other things on the agenda? I just didn't know if there's any other questions in the committee?
Let me, can I go over the recommendations that I'm hearing so far for you to think about? And if I've missed anything, please let me know. Perhaps moving the OTPT room closer to the gym was one. Or moving it to the center of the building rather than at the end. Note, review looking at stairs as you come into the building because it's prohibitive for some students.
Ramps.
I think also just.
Ramps versus.
When you come in having an elevator in a place that's obvious, like the way it was here, it's kind of like you have to go hunt for it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, there is one, yeah. So when you first walk right there, it's hard to see, but there is one, you see an elevator.
Just kidding.
But I, you know, it's right there.
I take that back.
Yeah, but put some thought into whether, when you walk in, the first thing you really want it to be the stairs that you see. And maybe that's all you can do, but that's okay.
And Brenda, are you talking about outside the stairs here or are you talking about these guys?
The stairs there is what I was thinking of. John, there too.
Yeah, those are correct. Those are correct. Just that first view coming into Main Street. We really want, want not to create barriers right away.
Right.
And then the other thing was the, moving the, the pod that was to the left of, that had those flexible rooms, move those more towards the center core of the building if we can. That was the other thing that I recommended.
Down on this end. Yes. Yep. Putting, making sure that we have sensory based rooms on at least two floors.
There are. I did find the second one up on the third floor.
Yep.
Pay attention to design when walking into large spaces, for example, the cafeteria for those with anxiety. Take a look at any place that you might have large spaces where people are going to have to walk into a large room. And then the last was take a look at the locker rooms being below the gym as it produces a lot of travel. Have I missed anything that you all thought of?
I'll add something in terms of like having FM systems in all classrooms. So students who might have hearing issues or staff who might have hearing issues. I'm not an expert in that, but we want to make sure that, you know, we have those in all classrooms. Like currently at the middle school, it's a challenge. We move systems around and like, that's like a universal thing that's good for all classrooms.
I'll speak to that for a second too. It's, that's a great thing because you have to put speakers in anyhow in the building, in the building and in the rooms. You can do that through, through a sound field system that, that really works well with a lot of students with multiple and a lot of, a lot of adults, a lot of people. It's a good, you're real universal way to be able to, to bring sound into the rooms in a nice way.
And we'd want those in the large, like the team areas too. So say the principal needs to talk to all the kids real quick or half of them right in that area. I can just put on a, you know, a quick like microphone type thing in it, you know.
Leveler. Yeah.
What are they, you know?
Leveler.
Level, yeah, thanks.
I'll say classroom spaces. How's that?
Perfect.
Learning spaces.
Thank you.
Sure.
Did I, is there anything else anybody thought of as far as special ed goes?
Is it possible to do a brief public comment on special ed before you move on?
Do we, is that all right with everyone?
It'd be great.
Good. Great. Come on up. If you just sign in and share your name so we'll know where you're from and.
And I will pick up my kid from DAS.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you back.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Habib. I've been in Concord for 35 years. I know about half you in the room and not everybody. I had two kids go through the Concord School System, Isaiah and Sam Mill, who are 27 and 24. Sam will use a wheelchair, so we've had a lot of experience with mobility and special education services. So I really appreciate, first of all, the conversation. The direction seems really positive. You know, we, a group of families who met with John and Kathleen and others shared some, you know, thoughts and concerns. But the only thing I would add, a couple of quick things. Love the idea of a ramp. Very concerned about the visual nature of having stairs as you walk right in. It's a big statement of inaccessibility right from the get-go. So I love hearing that conversation. Elevator wise, envision an elevator where you can have a child who's using a wheelchair mobility device, somebody maybe supporting them and several of their peers. So as long as it's big enough to feel like a normal elevator you'd see in a hotel or a hospital or whatever. But I guess the big comment I would make, I appreciated what John said about trying to maybe move and not have those, such a segregated feel to those flexible, you know, rooms that were called, I think, special education rooms, but are now flexible. But I would actually much rather see them broken up and having those flexible instruction areas slightly larger and tied to the pods throughout the building. Because if you have a seventh grade kid or kids with disabilities, they want to be with their seventh grade peers. They don't want to be in a room in the corner of the building with sixth graders and eighth graders. It's very stigmatizing. It's very othering and it's very not conducive to peer supported education. Because if you're in a, if you're in a flexible learning area and you need some individualized instruction time or some time to settle down, and you, and you take those 15, 20 minutes, then you come right back to your pod. And if you have peers that want to work with you, and there are many peers that do want to work with, with kids that have certain challenges, it's very natural to be going back and forth between those spaces. Whenever you start to put kids in a specific part of the building, you destroy that sense of, of inclusion, that sense of belonging. And I truly believe that if you have spaces throughout the building that are either that size or a little bit larger, you can serve the needs of kids with disabilities without having large segregated spaces. And those, those flexible areas can be certainly for kids with IEPs or 504s. They can also be for English language learners. They could be for the diversity and equity and justice groups. They could be for quote unquote, what are they called? High achievers. I can't remember the name. Yeah, gifted and talented. And they could just be for any diverse mix of kids. So I think that to me is like the biggest game changer. If we can create spaces throughout the building that are flexible and that naturally include kids of all abilities together and don't segregate. And I also do support the idea of bringing PT and OT, other services more naturally aligned with parts of the building where they're going to want to be. Because my son Sam, for example, uses a wheelchair, but he did regular PT with support. So he doesn't need a, you know, PT room. He needed to be near and adjacent to the, the gym where he could then get the support from a PT to kind of help him participate. So there's a lot more I can say, but I don't want to take up too much time. Appreciate, I appreciate the, the opportunity. We want to continue to be actively involved and supportive of this process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jillian?
Oh, I just was curious what you, I was thinking earlier about like having the gym and I think the auditorium too, right? Or, oh no, maybe it's just the gyms on the second floor. But I was just wondering if like, as somebody who has a child with, who uses a wheelchair, like, I don't know, I just picture there being even more people who would need elevators for like a gym where there's a lot of folks coming in from the community.
Right.
And like if that, I don't know, is even more of an.
It's a good point. I mean, I think there's obviously a lot of competing interests. And one thought that I didn't share just now, but we talked about earlier, is if you have, I worry a lot about emergency egress for our kid. And I mean, with all due respect, the idea of having like a safe space at the top of the, oh, the stairs scares the heck out of me. It sounds very sketchy. So I would, I want my kid out of the building like everybody else. So if you, you know, in terms of competing interests, if you have the opportunity for mixed grades on the first floor, sixth, seventh and eighth, a child in a wheelchair could be in the sixth grade class, the seventh grade class, the eighth grade class, all on that first floor with, with emergency egress. I also brought up the idea of is there a way to landscape so that you've got a natural outdoor ramp from the second floor to the ground level? So that if there was an issue with emergency egress, you could get out at least from the second floor safely, you know, without having to go down the stairs. Because we did too many drills with Sam trying to get down in the high school, like, almost like a White Mountain Rescue team trying to get him down, you know, it's scary. So it's a great point about the gym. I just, I think, I would think more about the day to day needs of the student, even though I appreciate, you know, the community needs to have access to that as well. So.
We have been talking about the, the teams being able to be vertical. So you could have a sixth grade, a seventh grade and an eighth grade. To your point.
Right.
Would you have any concerns about all the students in wheelchairs having to be in pods on the, you know?
They have a choice. I mean, they still would have a choice. There's still elevators. You know, but if I, if it's a family who's really concerned about that egress, that could be in their IEP, that they would have first floor access. But other families would be like, sure, I'm okay with the second floor.
And I think too, is sometimes there's complex medical needs too. And sometimes. And the fact is that, that's where the nurse's office is. That's where it might make more sense to, to do it. And the family and the team may decide that that's the best place for it to be. And it gives us, I like that three year option to do that too.
I feel like the spirit is very much consistent with all of what we're feeling. We just said earlier, like we have this day to day lived experience that not everyone has of like every day of every second where navigating stuff like this. So we want to bring that, you know, expertise to the table.
I've also, I'd just add, I've also had staff who are in a wheelchair. So I have a social studies teacher that was in a wheelchair. So some of the things I think about, you know, what does that look like for a staff member in the building, you know? And how can they easily get to their classroom? And what does that look like? So.
Yeah. Did you guys want to add anything? All right. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Yeah.
So just probably pointing out that we do have the flexible instruction spaces here on the upper floor. So maybe we should look at something similar for all the floors, you know? There's an opportunity on the second floor that they could be, you know, in this location. We want to make sure everybody's got windows, like every other classroom, but there may be ways to move things around in here where we can. Sorry. Thanks.
Yeah, I see that.
So we'll work on that.
We may want to look on those sensory rooms too, to not have them like on an outskirts of a building as opposed to like having them more centrally located. Not necessarily adding more of them, but more accessible. Because if a youth is having a difficult time and needs to go and it's not like a scheduled session to spend some time in there, going all the way down across another pod through the Main Street might be difficult.
So if they're like in this zone, someone could come out, someone could come out, someone could come out. It's not like walking all the way to the end, basically. Right? Yep. That's a good point.
Just one last thing. Yep. So I really appreciate what Mr. Habib said about, you know, the sixth, seventh and eighth being on one floor and, you know, on each of the floors sort of scaffold. And I think that's a great option. However, one of the things we really work toward is some co-teaching and team teaching among educators. And one of the philosophies is that like, you know, these students aren't just your students. All sixth graders belong to all sixth grade teachers. All seventh grade teachers belong, seventh grade kids belong to all. So I'm trying to think of a way, and this is an opportunity to just imagine, how could we live up to that really important concept of the co-teaching model as well as that ability for students who may need first floor access for the all three years? You know, how could we wed those? And that's just an invitation to think about. That's all. Great. Thank you. No, it's important. You're right.
We will point out there is a stair in each team pod to really facilitate that kind of vertical, you know, movement of a team. So it's right there. So it's.
Yeah, but like I like the idea of like all the sixth grade math teachers being able to eat lunch together and share ideas. And so, yeah, it's, it's a tricky thing to balance.
So maybe it's the teacher planning. Their rooms have to be, there has to be one for each tower so the teachers can meet there as opposed to one for each. I mean, there would still be one for each floor, but maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe one floor, sixth grade, one floor, seventh grade, one floor, eighth grade.
In each tower.
Let the teachers move there instead of students.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great. So should we move on to the auditorium?
And I have to skip out for a child.
Thank you very much. Please come back anytime you'd like.
Okay, we're going to transition to the auditorium. So just, one of the things that I actually did is I just created like a, I literally considered like a draft memo. Tom had sent an email out to the group and said, you know, are there some ideas of uses that we would use? So I'm just going to pass this around, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. But it also, you know, provides you an opportunity, what I'm kind of have been thinking about. And I've talked to a couple, you know, music staff members, Karen Braz for PEG, for example, has given me some, you know, insights about things. So again, I'm not going to read through it, but that'll go around while they bring up some of the slides and I'm happy to answer some questions.
Thank you, Jay.
Hard Off the Press has just completed it this afternoon and shared it with Superintendent Murphy.
Thank you.
So do you want to, do you want us to walk through these slides or do you want to walk through this list?
You can show the slides and, you know, I'll just start to, you know, I did have the opportunity to attend all the music concerts. I saw my chorus concert, my band concert, my strings concert. You know, one of the things that I think a lot about in terms of having our own auditorium and music space, just the flexibility that'll provide my staff and students. I loved the Capital Center. It was beautiful. Had a great time. But some of the things I do think about, you know, we're charging families to go to the Capital Center. It's $5 per person. I recognize maybe some, you know, some people are, you know, let in per se, but you know, it's $5. They have to find parking. If you have a family of five and you're going to the Capital Center to see a concert, it's, you know, $25. The stark reality of my students at my school is I have 40% of my students who are on free reduced lunch. So I think that definitely has an impact. Again, please know I, I don't want to be critical of the Capital Center. I mean, I think in the future, there still would be opportunities to use that as a space. But just the types of things that I think about also, you know, moving all the equipment over there, the logistics of that. And I just think there's, you know, you're going to see from my memo, I just think having a district auditorium for our students K through 12 for our music programs, the opportunities that it'll afford. I just, I think that's something that, again, I think it might be a challenge to think about right now. But I think it's one of those things, I think 30 years down the road, when people look back on it and we don't have a space like an auditorium, people are going to say, why didn't the people who were thinking about the needs of our students about the needs of our students in the Capitol, why didn't they do something like that? So that's kind of how my thought process with this list. And I just think it has a lot of opportunity to our students K through 12, having an auditorium in this space. Again, K-12, I look at this, that's what the resource would be. Next week, I actually am looking forward to speak with the elementary staff just to talk about what a good neighbor I'm going to be, moving over to that side of the town and the opportunities. So again, an auditorium, if the elementary schools, Millbrook and Broken Ground, wanted to have a guest speaker, you know, that would be a space they could bring their entire school community over right next door. Music concerts across the district, guest speakers, I just, I'm excited about an auditorium that would be for our entire, you know, district. But not only that, our entire community here in Concord, things that we could do. I think about Superintendent Murphy, how she does her opening remarks at Memorial Field. What happens if it's pouring out? What happens if the school board decided they had a really, a meeting that was very popular to attend? I mean, you could logistically set it up real quick where you could have it at the new middle school on like that stage or in that auditorium. So I just think it presents so many, I won't, I won't continue to pile on, there's a list there. And one of the things I said, you know, this is not a fully inclusive list because I think twenty years down the road, people will be creative and think of other opportunities that an auditorium would present on a community like ours. So, sorry for rambling, but this is something I feel really passionate about.
I think that there's, it's implied kind of in here, but I think it needs to be actually said, rehearsal type space. I mean, you know, if you go into the Capital Center for the Arts, you don't get to go down there and rehearse on that stage.
Once.
Right?
Once if you're lucky. And, you know, when I think of all my students in our PEG Performance Ensemble Group, they do two big shows a year, they do rehearsals, practices, it's several weeks. And they're in substandard classrooms right now, but they need like a dedicated space where they can practice and rehearse for several weeks and, yeah, it's just many, many positive.
Thanks again for your, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you asking.
Can I ask, how often do you get the entire school together, all nine hundred students?
Yeah, that's a great question. Just this year, I can think of two times that we've done that. I would say it's, it's not a lot, but those would be special occasions, honestly, so only really like several times a year. I see it more of like we would have like a group of maybe two grade levels and guests and things like that. So it would only be several times a year. But I do think, when we think of district level things, I think we would, it would be more frequent in terms of opportunities in the community, really, to have larger group type things. I think having a video screen would be very important. I think like guest speakers, where we can project a guest speaker. Like right now, I'm looking at Caitlin, and she actually brings in guest speakers for our school, for the PTO.
We're having, looking for BMX rider from Massachusetts to come up and do an anti-bullying presentation. So he has to go do a sixth grade one, seventh grade one, and then an eighth grade one. So if we, and it's more expensive, obviously, to have two, three. So a bigger space would be better. I also wanted to add, I was on the board at the Concord Library Foundation for years, and I used to run the Concord Reads program. And that was a struggle to find a space that was accessible, because the Audi is not very accessible, that was big enough that we could host, Concord Reads, everyone reads the same book in the community, and then we bring the author in to talk about it. This would be a perfect place for that, these other types of community events. But I think it would be, we would have more opportunities to bring speakers in, you know, because I think that's a great way to use our money from the PTOs, to bring speakers in to talk to the kids. With an auditorium like this, the space issue is really bad.
I guess, what my, one quick question, and I'll come right to you.
Yep.
When you're looking at this, obviously, the cost is important for us to consider. And in making a recommendation, I'm seeing a large and a small here, is there a medium proposal?
Sure.
And what are they? Dollar-wise? I thought we'd started out last week, last time, talking about it's very important to have price tags. And if you're talking about low, medium, and high, then what are they? I mean, we need to have context. You don't go, you don't go shopping for clothes.
We understand.
Or, or insurance without knowing what it's costing. So why are we not doing that here today? I'm sorry, I should be talking into this. So the question is, what are the dollars?
They do have them, we just haven't gotten to it yet.
We, we have to draw up all the plans, and by the end of May, we'll be working on the cost estimate for you all to make a decision. And we'll have them priced, small, medium, large, and that's when you'll be able to decide which option you can afford, or you want to afford.
So that isn't a decision this group would make, then?
That's, that's above my pay grade. I'm not sure who makes decisions, but.
So I just want, like, when we think about small, medium, or large, right? So if you look at that space, that small space where there's four hundred and thirty-seven seats, right? Like, I have, you know, a grade level of my students is approximately, say, two hundred and seventy kids to three hundred kids. One of the things I think about, again, thirty years down the road, we can say, you know, we don't have the hugest enrollments right now, but what is it going to look like thirty years down the road? Because just in the, say, twenty-four years ago, where I think Runlet Middle School probably had over a thousand kids. I know a school that I worked in had eight hundred and fifty kids. Now it's down to six hundred and fifty kids. So I just think, big picture, over time, that we just want to be thoughtful of that. And I don't think we want to have a space that we look, oh, I wish we had built this a little bit bigger. When I think of like nine hundred seats, very candidly, I'm just going to use the most recent experience at the Capital Center. I think that's twelve hundred seats. We don't, definitely don't need, I think.
Thirteen oh four.
What's that?
Thirteen oh four.
Is it thirteen oh four? Okay. So we don't need a thirteen oh four. The reason why I say that, and again, I experienced that, there were some empty seats, not so much on the band night, that's for sure, but there were some empty seats. One of the things that we do is actually, we have the students wait in the crowd, so they're taking up seats to wait for the performance. But we want to make sure we have it sized well enough so everybody who wants to attend a concert can attend a concert. If you said, Jay, pick one, I would definitely say nine hundred, because the reason why that, we want to make sure all families and people have a seats. We might not use it a hundred times like that a year, but the several, or dozen, or maybe fifteen times we do use it, we have a space in our school community that we can use it for these types of events, and it's free. You know, it's a public school.
So. Can I just add to that for a second? I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, thank you very much. And January twenty-third, we have a speaker for Professional Development Day. And we actually had to pay, you know, we had to hold it for two sessions because we couldn't fit all the staff into the theater at the high school. So from a curriculum instruction assessment point of view, I would like opportunities to bring all of the staff together for professional development and then do breakout sessions from there. So I would really advocate for that large space for PD purposes. So nine hundred would be what, you would need to bring staff together? Yes. Okay.
Once a year.
No, we have PD three or four times a year.
Oh, all right, on the professional development.
Yeah. And what, do we use it every time on all those days? Maybe, maybe not, but certainly bringing all the staff together in one place and not having to double pay a person to do a presentation. Right.
May I continue with my research?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Is there a reason why that couldn't be done in a gymnasium and only paid for it once?
It has a lot to do with acoustics. It's very, very hard in a gymnasium.
I'm doing this under protest in a sense, that I'm very unhappy that we don't have costs. But I'll go ahead, because I've prepared this, and this was supposed to be up tonight, so here we go. The thirty largest towns and cities in New Hampshire were surveyed as to whether they had a, an auditorium at the middle school. The answer was seven do out of thirty, and the remaining twenty-three do not. There is some commonality among those that do. They don't have, lack, they don't have a lot of other spaces. I'm going to give you the idea of the other spaces that are available in Concord. I'll go slow enough so you can write them down if you want to. And I'll start in with, in your own middle school, you'll have two or three spaces, would you not, of, say, three or four hundred kids could meet at one time, Jay?
In the, in the new design?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I honestly haven't looked at it, but yes, we would have seats in the gym, so we could have more people, we could have people in there, absolutely.
Cafeteria or whatever it's called.
Yep.
Okay, so there's that answer. At Concord High School, six hundred. At the City Auditorium, eight hundred and thirty-five. At the Capital Center for the Arts, thirteen oh four. I wouldn't suggest going there. New Hampshire Tech, this one surprised me, Greponi Hall, a hundred and seventy-five, and it's just down Gully Hill. New Hampshire Tech, Sweeney Hall, two hundred and forty-six, just down Gully Hill. The Bank of New Hampshire Stage, two ninety-six. And then one I discovered just today, which shocked me, Bechtash Temple has a hall, one hundred by sixty, and it holds seven hundred people. And it's not that far away. So I, and I would be willing to debate, or at least make the comment, that as wonderful as this is, you have to remember from your very first course in economics, the thing that you discuss the first day is the difference between wish and need. Wish, four letters. Need, four letters. Do you wish you had it, or do you need to have it in order to survive? And so when we can put a price tag on some of these small, medium, and large, maybe there is some negotiable interactive parts here. But for right at the moment, if you're going to have an auditorium that costs ten million dollars, you can pay an awful lot of rent or usage fees for ten million dollars over time. So there's my plea. I simply don't understand why we are talking about these possibilities in a time of declining enrollment. You know, face it, folks, I still see people out there saying, oh, we're going to have all this enrollment here, there, and the other place, and it's not been proven. And it's not going to be proven in the next few years. And so we have to make a decision now. And the other thing that really bothers me, and I don't have to worry about it as much as the rest of you, but if you build a building too large and place is too large, you're going to have today's people footing that cost. Okay, I'm not going to be around to do it more in a few more years, but the rest of you who are younger, you're being asked to pay upfront for what hasn't even been determined, not even here. Think about the kids who are going to be homeschooled. Think about the ones who are taking the New Hampshire grants and the amount of money that they're getting. Think about the times that we've talked about going to a three semester school, a different school year, not just two semesters, you know, until Christmas and then whatever. All of these things impact the space that you need. And you need to think about all of them, not just say, well, let's make it big enough so it'll always be there and it'll save us some money. Save you money? I don't think so. Wish, need, please, consider it.
Thank you, Betty.
So you asked a little bit about the process, and so the intent of this group was to deliberate over the proposals. In other words, as a group, come to some consensus. We knew that we would not have costs because obviously that comes when they do all of that work for the board for June, right? But the, the, the reason that we brought these groups together, and particularly this group, has a lot of decisions, was to be able to come to consensus as, yes, we need an auditorium, no, we don't need an auditorium, and yes, we need an auditorium that has nine hundred seats, or no, we don't want nine hundred, we want four fifty, or whatever. Do you know what I'm saying? A recommendation to the building committee. Then they will be getting the numbers from this group, the building committee, but at least talk about recommendations, just like today. Instead of a stairwell, we want a ramp, because we think that's important for our kids. I think that's the job of this group, and that's a hard job.
It is a hard job.
Because I don't disagree with Betty, it's hard to make a decision about the car I want to buy if I don't know the price. But, but I need to know, I need a car, and these are the things I need, and this is the reliability I need from now until I, you know, I, whatever. So I think, I understand the challenge of not having a number associated with it. But what does this committee want? What do they think our kids need?
Okay, we also have a dilemma on time.
Yep.
It's seven o'clock, which is our general stop time. So what I'm wondering is, do we want to take some time as a group to let this all sink in from tonight and start thinking about what, talk to the people in your communities, what do they think is an important consideration for an auditorium? Would they like to see an auditorium? Do they not want to see an auditorium? Would they want it to be large enough for the entire staff to attend, or the entire school population to attend? Or do they think a smaller one would be sufficient? And I think also with that, so that we are able to make, are able to make some recommendations as we go forward, I'd like to have you think about that with the athletic fields, too. Talk with people. What, what are people looking for in the athletic fields? What would they, what do they consider necessary, a need versus a want? And then let's, let's talk about those the next time that we're together so we can make some recommendations. And then, again, the gymnasium, that's, that's the other, I think, big one that we're going to have to really think about and, and, you know.
I would recommend that we start with those three topics, you know, so that you can go right to them. I don't think we need another presentation around the building and all the aspects of it.
Start right with these three next time.
And, yeah.
And then hopefully have time for the last two, which would be career pathways.
Right.
And outdoor learning spaces. So your homework, if you'd like, is to really take a look at these last, the five big areas that we are going to be considering. The auditorium, the athletic fields, the physical education spaces, which would be the gymnasium, career pathways, which would be like shop classes that you might have taken when you were in element, middle school.
Or new versions of those.
Or new versions of those, right.
Or like what you might see at the high school level?
Yes.
Like culinary.
Early CRTC things, culinary that, I remember culinary in middle school, I love it. And then the last one would be outdoor learning spaces. Again, a need or a want? And, and first make your decisions on what do, what do you think from talking to people and the research you're doing? Is this a need or is it a want? And then how much, how little of that do we want to recommend? And that's, that's where our job ends, is the recommendation phase.
And what if the people we talk to say, how much will it cost?
They will know that, because they'll go by, they'll, we'll be able to say, and then we'd like a medium gym with three hundred seats. And then they'll get the price, and they can say, well, no, that's too much.
No, I'm not sure you understand. If you're encouraging me to ask people, and they say to me, you know, how much does it cost, then.
We'll find out in June, I think, right? I'm not, sorry, Betty, I'm not trying to be.
Well, I'm looking forward to June because I'll be another year older. So June's a long way to go, in one way.
Jillian?
Um, just one thing that, like, I was kind of thinking about with the auditorium and some of the things, too, is like, I just wish that we could kind of have a in-between also of like want versus need of kind of like, you know, so when my parents built their house, when I was born, they said, we don't have money for a garage, but we're going to build our house on our lot so that someday, when my grandfather died, and they got some money, they built their garage.
Right.
Twenty-five years later. So I just wonder, too, if there's space for that kind of thing, where we can say, you know, we'll try it out. This is a, we are looking for, you know, not necessarily for the auditorium, but for, for anything, for the extra pod, for, you know. know, I just think it would be nice to have the school be, and, and I think that's one of the things that we, that people were looking at when they decided on that location, too, that there would be room to grow.
Right.
So...
And I think that's, again, more maybe the building committee.
Yeah.
So, we, we offer them our recommendations on these things, they're going to decide that's, we can't do it now, or we can do it, but maybe not everything you want. So, I think our, our job here is just to make a recommendation, yeah, we really think it's important that there's an auditorium, or we don't think it's important. Is that correct, Superintendent?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
What is the current student population at Runlet?
We have a, I can double-check it, I could actually look in Power School, but it's like, 775 students.
And what is the, like, coding space for each pod? Like, what is the capacity for each pod that's estimated?
Each classroom can have, you know, 25 students in it.
Okay, so you're looking at what?
100 per pod.
Four classrooms, okay.
Yeah. There's, there's extra capacity built into this, which I think will help you expand easily in the future, and then we'll also take into account a zone where you can put another pod on in the future, if you wanted to bring fifth grade to the school.
One last question.
Sure.
If there are implications on qualifications for auditoriums, and limitations as far as building aid goes, can someone responsibly find out that data to see if it impacts what we would talk about next time?
Superintendent, is that something we can find?
We already have that, we already have that knowledge. We know that the state will pay for X amount of size of an auditorium, so we'll have that, we'll have that for you.
Okay, but X has a number.
Yes, X has a number.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I've got a lot of homework here, so...